And I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, September 14th, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first Selectmen's report. I have a few things tonight for you. As of today, there have been 254 COVID cases reported in Darien since the first report was made on March 12th. We've had 40 cases reported to us since July 1st, 19 cases in July, 18 cases in August, and three in September so far. That's really good when you think about our population and the transient nature of our population and some people traveling, et cetera. So, thank you to the Darien community for doing everything that you need to do to keep yourself and your family safe. Positive cases of college students, however, who've been tested before returning to college, will be included in the reports that we get from the state, even though they are at college and will not be returning if they're positive. So, that's something that our local health director is communicating with the State Department of Health. The reason why I bring that up is that if these positive cases are reported but are not actually here in Connecticut, I'm concerned that they factor into the countywide data that gets used for changing the school open posture.
Oh, there's a lot of implications on that. Travel, yeah, no, we need to.
Right. So David is voicing our collective concerns on that. I want to thank Terry Gaffney and the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for this year's 9/11 ceremony. It's hard to believe it's been 19 years because it certainly seems like it was just yesterday. But they did a lovely job, very simple but very moving. Thank you all for being here. As Edwell knows, about 33 town street signs have been removed and/or stolen, along with a number of poles also being damaged. It's not a harmless prank, for who's ever listening. It's considered a larceny, a charge punishable by a $500 fine and up to three months in jail. The missing street signs cause confusion for drivers and potential delays for emergency vehicles. Our police department is investigating and Public Works is in the process of installing new signs and poles when needed. Regarding elections, the Secretary of the State's Office has provided some funding support for our elections. Darien has received $17,612 from the Secretary of State's Office. Today, the town clerk received election supplies, not including the ballots. The ballots should be available by October 2nd and will be, they'll begin to mail them out on that date. We anticipate mailing this year about 8,000 ballots, but that number is uncertain. In 2016, we mailed 1,941 ballots, so it's going to be yeoman's work. I think they've hired some extra staff to help them with that task. For those using the mail-in ballot process this election, I encourage you, if you can, to bring your ballot appropriately sealed in the envelopes provided to the drop box that's here in front of Town Hall so that there's no risk of mailing delays. We want all ballots to arrive on time for counting. In March, Yale University began an experimental surveillance of wastewater in New Haven as a way of potentially predicting COVID prevalence and potential outbreaks. The study's being led by Dr. Jordan Petchia and has expanded to wastewater treatment plants in Stanford, Bridgeport, Hartford, Norwich, and New London. Samples are taken only at one location at each treatment plant, so there's no ability to determine geographically where the virus is present here in our Stanford Treatment Plant Service area, which includes the town of Darien. On September 10th, David Knopf and I had the opportunity to speak directly with Dr. Petchia about the study. While the data is not public, because they continue to make refinements to the data collection and the way they're analyzing, it's believed that the increases in the presence of COVID in sewage is a leading indicator of potential outbreak with about six to eight days as the timeline. Once they see it in the sewage, they predict, or they've seen at least in New Haven, that it predicts a spike six to eight days later. As you probably know, 12% to 14% of the total wastewater treated at the Stanford facility comes from Darien. Mayor Martin issued a warning to his community on August 31st. However, no such spike or outbreak was detected in their testing results from Stanford and the Darien sewage. And the data has actually showed significant improvement since the 31st of August. Dr. Petchia does not believe that the sewage data should be used for policymaking, but it does underscore the need for our sewage treatment professionals to be diligent in their safety protocols. And Ed joined us on that call, so he's very well aware of that. I think Kate's going to talk a little bit about Highland Farm tonight, but what I'd like to say about Highland Farm is the intent for the ADA compliant walking trail at Highland Farm is for walkers and joggers to enjoy. I've noticed that a lot of people have discovered it. They're really enjoying that space. It's a wonderful place to go out and passively recreate. I've noticed that some children are riding non-motorized scooters or learning to ride bikes there. That's awesome. This is fine, but no one should be using motorized vehicles of any kind on the walking trail. Also, as a reminder, dogs must be on leash for the safety of other patrons and the horses next door. Another reminder is that no kite flying, no drone flying, and no hitting of golf balls at that site. Aquarion, we are experiencing a continued rainfall deficit for the current year. Aquarion has alerted us that we may reach the third drought trigger next week, which will force additional mandatory conservation measures, including one-time-only per-lead irrigation, a mandatory 20% reduction of your water usage, and no variances will be granted by Aquarion for installing landscape plants or large property irrigation. So, I don't think we have a lot of rain forecast, so it is likely that we will in fact hit that drought trigger, so everybody should be mindful about their 20% conservation mandate that will be coming. And I want to share with you that I've been asked to participate on the CCM working group to provide input for potential modifications to Public Act 20-1, which is the Police Accountability Bill. CCM will be receiving input from the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, who wishes to seek modifications to four components of the bill: use of force, qualified immunity, duty to intervene, and consent searches. Our group will also focus on the financial mandates in the bill, such as the use of body cameras, the storage for that digital footage, accreditation, and mental health screenings. So we don't know where that will go, but CCM will provide substantive input for the legislative process. And I believe those things will be considered in the norm, the regular session beginning next January or February. Thank you.
I'm going to start with an update on the proposed lease with MetroNorth. I had asked Jeremy Ginsburg if we needed a mandatory referral for the lease, and he believed that we did. So I did send a letter to Planning &amp; zoning asking for it. Shortly before the meeting with P&amp;Z on the 8th, we learned that we did not in fact need the mandatory referral, but I still attended their meeting as members had questions on the lease. The meeting didn't go well. None of the members present were in favor of the lease, and two who could not attend had voiced their objections via email. The primary objection seemed to be the spots that were proposed to be leased to MetroNorth were on the inbound side of the lot, and they felt prime parking spaces. Had the proposal been for the outbound pay station lot near the depot or down below in the permit lot on the other side, they indicated that they would have had no objections. It was one of the many issues they brought up that weren't, in my opinion, in their purview. You know, the mandatory referrals to determine whether the proposal's in consistent with the plan of conservation and development, so I don't see how, which side of the tracks.
Location was not a issue.
Right. Other questions they asked centered on why did MetroNorth want to be near the train stations? And why not lease commercial space? Again, things that, you know, nothing that I was, I felt was our responsibility to be asking them in terms of the lease, but. Then on the 9th, Ed and I had a meeting with representatives from the state DOT. They discussed the state's issues as they relate to the lease. They informed us that they would be paying or reimbursing MetroNorth for a portion of the, because they pay a portion of MetroNorth's expenses, they basically had a financial interest in the proposed lease. And the question had been raised at state, why should they pay to lease space that they, the state, owned? It's my belief that the other issues that would go along with them vacating our lease would prevent them from doing so. Primarily, they'd have to operate the lot, and I don't think they want to do that. So I don't think that they will vacate the lease, but it's important to know that that question was raised, that, you know, if there are problems, they might just say, "Well, you know, hey, we own the lot. You know, we'll give it to you." The other thing that we learned, I think that's really important from the discussion with the state, is that the need to lease is, at least to the state's knowledge, strictly about providing appropriate social distancing for their employees. The employees to be located on the site are maintenance employees, and their union is calling for them to be appropriately social-distanced. There was other information discussed that's pertinent to the lease that I shared with Town Council to assist them in negotiations. I don't think it's stuff that we want to talk about publicly because we are negotiating with them. And I spoke to the Town Council this morning, and based on that discussion, I told the moderator, the RTM, that I don't believe the item should move forward. We're not ready. We don't have final terms of the lease. So it is being, I don't know if they'll actually table it or just withdraw it from the agenda, but the RTM is aware of that. That's where we stand right now. Planning to increase public access to Town Hall. We're watching how the reopening of the schools is going, and it's my belief that if all goes well with the schools and they return to full in-person learning on the 29th, then Town Hall should allow increased access to the public. For operational ease, because that's a Tuesday, I just think we should wait till the following Monday rather than do it midweek. Now I'm going to talk about some of the finances, because we sent you some information with your packets from the Finance Department, so I'll talk about that and a little bit about Highland Farms as David raised some questions. So Krista, I got my notes on your questions. Okay. So, in the notes, property taxes, Jen had a note that the current taxes, $620,980 of the variance, the favorable variance, was due to budgeted collection rate. That is fiscal '20, and what she was referring to there was the estimated rate of collection that the Board of Finance used was 99.356. We actually collected about 99 and a half on the original levy. And if you look at the full, the final levy, there were some corrections, it was actually 99.6.
So we collected at 99.6?
Yes, based on the final levy. So this is a good thing. You also asked about the reduction, the unfavorable variance under licenses and permits that was related to the redevelopment projects. We made, in the budget, we made some estimates, you know, with information based on, from planning and zoning and building, how much in permits would be issued during the year. So it was all three of the major redevelopment projects. I can't tell you specifically which ones didn't, haven't come to that point yet.
Are they delayed or they're just withdrawn? Do we expect to see that in the next fiscal year?
We do, we do. You know, Palmer's is the one that's probably the furthest behind, but there is not an expectation at this point that things won't come forward.
Okay, it's just delayed as opposed to?
Yeah, yeah. Legal. We had, let's see, legal. We had positive balances from legal. So we had a small balance in the General Council budget and a small balance in the Labor Council budget. Really nothing, you know, about $6,000 each. The big variance was we had 89,000 positive variance in the land use legal budget. And that's just based on, you know, the estimated number of cases was not what we thought it would be.
We should anticipate that that will change.
We do anticipate that will change in the coming year because of the moratorium on affordable housing expiring. The library, oh no, six. Can we elaborate on what happened with police in the overtime? We had, we had one budget, we had one position that was unfilled for the majority of the fiscal year. We have about to hire a person, should be starting, I think, in October. And the other reason was the chief retiring caused a trickle-down. So we replaced the chief with the captain, captain with the lieutenant, you know, and so on down the line. So that triggers savings all the way down the line.
Okay.
Okay? We will not get any more detail on how the library spent their budget until the budget, the next budget comes around.
Okay.
If you want to change that, happy to support you.
That will be part of our grant agreement?
Pardon?
That will be part of our grant agreement, should be.
Intergovernmental revenue is our state grants. It would include federal grants if we got any, but we don't. So the biggest chunk of that is the ECS grant.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And so, that came in this year, about $100,000 more than we had anticipated.
Right.
The bad news. The Board of Ed has notified our Finance Department that we will lose money on the ECS grant in fiscal '21 because we received more in the Special Ed excess cost grant in fiscal '20 than we should have. And that's got a lot to do with COVID, with when you file for that grant, and when you're filing, you know, certain times in the year, you're filing estimated numbers
Right.
as opposed to final numbers. So when the final number shook out because of COVID, we ended up spending less than we had anticipated, which means we get reimbursed less than we had anticipated, except that we already got it.
So they're going to take it out for next year?
They take it out of our equalized cost-sharing grant next year, yes. Yeah.
It's interesting that they don't do the adjustment against future.
Excess costs.
Excess costs.
Well, that would be the fair thing to do, but.
Do we have?
Any recourse?
Recourse? We're sure that, or are we vetted that whole explanation to your satisfaction?
I just learned about it this morning.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so.
Okay.
But, you know, that's something that gets audited. And it is not the first time it's happened. So, and my question, when Jen told me, my question was, was this preventable? And her belief was no, it was not. And it all has to do with how that grant is applied for. And when, you know, when the schools shut down because of COVID, that truing, the truing-up process did not come in time to prevent us from getting more than we should have. Your last question was what was in the miscellaneous revenue, and there is a boatload of stuff in there. I'm just going to tell you the biggest numbers. We rent the cell tower that's at the landfill, at the transfer station and recycling center, if I get the name right. So we get about $150,000 of revenue from that. Another big chunk is insurance recoveries, and that comes mainly from claims and when we get the recovery not in the same year that the claim, the expense wasn't incurred. Another big item is the lease to BMW.
I'm sorry, could you elaborate on that?
They lease a part of the property of the recycling center that's adjacent to their land. It's something that's not usable to us.
Okay.
And then we make some good money off of recyclables. Between the scrap metal textiles and just plain recyclables, over $50,000 a year. And then, let's see.
Does that put the medical and the worker's comp in the contingency?
Pardon?
That line includes the medical and the worker's comp.
No, that's a revenue side.
That's a miscellaneous revenue. I just asked for more.
But it would, it would, so like if we had an employee go out on workers' comp, say they went out in May, we pay them their full salary.
Right.
We get reimbursed by the workers' comp carrier. If that workers, if that reimbursement does not occur in the same fiscal year, it's a revenue to us when it comes in. Okay, so, and just to give you an update on Highland Farm, so, you know, the state had re-
Can I just ask one really quick question?
Yep.
Now, I just want to make sure I understand, for line number four, other financing sources, is the right way to read this, at least the way I interpreted from the comment, that we had budgeted to transfer from fund balance, but we chose to pay down from that reserve instead? We didn't actually make the transfer?
No, so, so this is the weirdness of using fund balance as a revenue source. It's really a plug item in the budget. So, you know, say we say we're going to take $1 million out of fund balance to offset, you know, the revenues.
Right.
So we assume, just to go around numbers, we assume we're going to spend $150 million.
Right.
We're going to raise $149 million between taxes and fees and all that, and we're going to take $1 million from fund balance.
Okay.
Okay? So say we spend our whole $150 million, but we raise $149 and a half million from all the other sources.
Yeah.
Now we don't need to take that $500,000 from fund balance.
Right.
So we never actually record that revenue.
Okay.
So you almost never see a number there. It's just a plug and it gets left.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's the way I interpreted, just using slightly different language. But thank you.
That was on the revenue side, property taxes, $716,000 roughly to deposit. Higher collection rate than this?
Yes.
What about the deferrals?
That impacts the next fiscal year.
But was that taken out of the?
Nope, no. So this is just what was due and payable by June 30th of 2020.
Even though some of it might be deferred?
No, you couldn't, you didn't defer taxes. The deferrals all applied to taxes that were due and payable after July 1st of 2020.
Okay, so in other words, this really is net of the deferrals?
No, the deferrals are in the next fiscal year. This is last fiscal year?
Sorry.
Yeah.
It's right. Money coming in, did you actually receive $140 million?
Yes, we did.
So that basically, the people who got deferrals of their tax payments have not, it's not in that number?
No, because it shouldn't be.
Whether it should or should be, it's not in the number. That's all I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, it's not in the number.
So that $716,000 is a true pickup due to more collections than projected?
Right.
Got it. That's all I wanted to know.
It's also partly due to the way that they set the collection rate at the Board of Finance level. They always take the, and they subtract the 25 basis points, which always.
And then different things happen, so, you know, the grant list does change during the year. Things do get added to it. So, you know, if a project was completed or even at a certain percentage of completion during the fiscal year, we can assess that and we can levy a mid-year tax on it.
Right. So that's why you were saying the final assessment.
Yeah, the final levy versus the original levy.
Final levy.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So the STEEP grant, they opened them up again this year, and we had to apply for it by the end of August, and we could apply for a maximum of $128,000 and change. We reviewed, and you also had to have a local match, didn't, they didn't specify what percentage, so you had to have some local dollars involved in whatever project you applied for. So Jamie and I met with Ed and with Pam Gary and looked at some projects that we had ready to go, where there was local funding already available, because we weren't going to have time to get new funding in place before the deadline. So we talked about a whole bunch of different, we talked about sidewalks, we talked about the Cherry Lawn Basketball Court, we talked about Highland Farm. There was one other. One of your projects, I think, we talked about. But anyway, in looking at the state grant application, one of the questions had to do with the state's plan of conservation and development, and did our project align with theirs? Not just our local one, but did our project align with the state's grant? So, based on that, we applied for the grant for landscaping in the pollinator pathway at Highland Farms. So we should hear back soon, sometime this month, on whether or not we got that. We met with.
Sorry, Kate, the local match to that is the design money
Yes.
that we already have and have been utilizing, so there's no additional funds that will be required for the match?
So we met with Dan Biggs Thursday, virtually. And he had met with the neighbors of Highland Farms, and he felt that the meetings had gone well. The input from, and these aren't answering some of David's questions here. The input from the neighbors is absolutely being incorporated into the plan. Right, there is a, there are preliminary drawings that would show, that show how the parking lots would be screened, screening in the corner where Middlesex turns, tree plantings around the walkway, trees around the edges, the pollinator pathway. But it's very preliminary. And, you know, we will review the plan with the neighbors when it's finalized, but you don't really want to get, make promises about what will go, you know, what we'll actually be able to do and when we'll be able to do it, because we don't have the funding in place yet. We don't know if we'll get the state grant. If we don't get the state grant, we'll have to seek local funding, and that could impact what we're able to actually do. You know, we may need to phase it. We may need to put some of it off for a while. There will be no further, at least there is no further planned regrading of the property. It would all be, you know, as-is. And when we can do the work really will depend on when we get the funding in the planting season. Anything?
That's it. Just a couple of other details. We're certainly committed to landscaping at Highland Farm.
Absolutely.
We promised it. But to just emphasize what Kate said, it will be determined when we can get a funding source. Might have to be over a series of a couple of years, but we are committed to landscaping.
Yeah, and you know, one of the things with the pollinator pathway is that we will need to commit to no pesticides.
Right.
So that may actually be a thing that you want to take a vote on at some future date to, as, you know.
But why is that?
Why? Because the pollinator pathway is a natural thing for, you know, the bees and the butterflies to be attracted and, so pesticides would harm that.
In order to be considered for the pollinator pathway, it has to be pesticide-free.
Oh, okay.
And I would actually really like that to be, that's probably on agenda review, but I would like to vote on that because I'd like Highland Farms to be kind of our demonstration project with organic fertilizer and no pesticides. I know, you know, there's some people who might not be on board with that, but I think it's a clean slate there. We should try it.
Well, and it's a good spot because it's not, you know, a manicured baseball field.
Right.
So it's a good spot to be doing that. If you want to see what the pollinator pathway looks like, actually, some of the hillside in front here that was replanted this summer, those, that's a pollinator pathway. There's going to be a sign put out there, you know, telling you all about it.
I would just add that I think that the use of the field is evolving. And I would let that use evolve before we decide to plant trees here or there or anywhere else because you may find that the way it is being used, the way people like to use it, is a little bit different than the original plan of where you want to put trees and shrubs. And you just want to give a little chance for people to show you how they like it, how they use it. That's just my view.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
That's a good one.
Can I have a quick question? And I'd like to go back to just the MetroNorth discussion really quickly. Something you said, I just was thinking. You said something about MetroNorth or the state, whether DOT, not wanting to pay for a lot that they own. So does that mean that we would get no revenue out of this lease?
No, we will. We will. But, so the question was raised because, you know, one of the concerns that Ed and I have had is that MetroNorth could just go to the state and say, "Give us the lot."
Right.
And that the state would say, "Okay." And then they would get the, they would get the use of it, and we would get no revenue. So the state did bring up, you know, they made a point of that. So, the state did bring up, you know, they made a point of that, that it is their law. And people within the DOT have been questioning, why would we agree to pay, I think it's, they said sixty-five percent? They pay Metro North? Why would we agree to pay to rent a piece of property that we own?
Because the options, they have to now run the lots.
No, I, I appreciate that, I'm just trying to follow the-
Yeah, so we would still get the revenue, so if things go forward as we proposed, we would get the revenue.
Yeah, that's the piece of-
Yeah.
Could you clarify where that stands now, sorry, after all that? We were looking at, first, there was a one-year, two-year, but I thought we had discussed it was a one-year renewable. Jamie brought that-
Yes, so-
We wanted that.
We wanted that.
Oh, okay.
They wanted two years. Were, you know, there's discussion of what we could use as termination clauses, you know, that-
Let me clarify, let me ask another question, is this coming back to the board's selectmen or no?
Yeah, I believe it has to, and then it has to go to the RTM.
Okay.
But we don't have, we, we are not prepared to do it right now, because we don't have, we don't have an agreement with them that we can bring to you and say, "Please approve this."
Good, as long as it comes back here first.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify where we are, whether it moves location or, or terms. And then my question, when, your second point, when you started to speak about town hall, are we back now? Or, I don't know, Monday through Friday, or are we still on Friday?
We're still, we're on flexible schedule, we decided to continue it, because we haven't really had the opportunity to have the public fully experience it, like, the part of the flexible schedule is supposed to be Tuesdays, we would be open until seven P M. We haven't done that, since the public is only allowed to come in by appointment, it hasn't seemed to make sense. So, if we increase access to the public, to this building, we would start staying open late on Tuesday nights, see where, see how the public feels about it. And we're, we're having the trial run through the end of this calendar year, to give us, you know, we want to try and get a sense of, does the public like it? I can tell you the employees like it. They, you know, the, the feedback is, you know, the longer days can be tough, but it's so beneficial to have the Friday off. But we really just don't have a sense of how the public feels about it, because, you know, they're really not here.
So, the proposal is to stay closed on Friday for the end of the year?
Yes. So, we're here, we're open eight A M. to five fifteen P M. Monday through Thursday. So, we're still open the same number of hours in total. But I suppose employees get a half an hour lunch now, so employees are still working the same number of hours.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I'm, I'm not, I'm just-
Yeah.
...access to resources here in the building. I thought we had looked at it as a summer-
It was a, it was a trial over the summer, to see how it went and to see what the reaction was. Employees like it, people, the public likes it. But because we haven't been able to get the public aspect of it, it's really hard to judge that. So, we decided to extend the trial.
And how Tuesdays are open all of a sudden?
Well, when we reopen to the public, yeah. And, you know, certain things like building inspections, fire and martial inspections, they go on, on Fridays. We have those employees still working on Fridays.
Can I ask Ed a really quick question?
Yeah.
When we, when, when are, do you think that the project of extending the walkway along the Nuroten Heights Station to connect the upper lot to the, to the lower lot, when, when does that fall into your schedule of things to do?
To be honest with you, but-
Hold on, Ed, would you mind coming up here to the podium?
That was the, that was the other one we, we talked about, Ford.
Was that it?
I think, I think that was it.
I was looking at, over the wintertime, putting together a design plan.
Okay.
And then possibly implementing it in April, May, and June of next year, or depending on the commuter use, if it's, has come back during that time, I'd wait a little bit longer. It does tend to thin out over there during the summertime. So, that's, that's the window I'm shooting for right now. We do have quite a few projects that are ongoing, I'd like to get them wrapped up.
Oh, I see.
I do have some concrete work to do on these steps out here, too, they go down to the lower lot. I want to get those done before the winter. So, we're kind of pushing those right now, but as soon as we get them in the books, we'll focus on, that's one of the projects we want to focus on, as well as a couple of the sidewalk projects.
Okay.
It seems like it would be a really good time to do that project sooner, rather than later, without the commuters being a hindrance.
That is going to be included, there, those numbers will be included in our bids, and we're just starting to put the bid for the concrete sidewalks together right now.
Okay. Did anybody have any other questions for Kate in her report?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Reports from selectmen serving as liaisons to other boards and commissions. David, you submitted your report.
Yeah, I submitted mine, I can go over it if you want, or we can just-
Sure, go ahead.
Well, no, just very quickly, the Blight Board did meet. It looks like we have one additional incremental active case and the same number of watchless cases. There is, it's sort of slow progress, I will call it, one of our chronic cases. The, the gentleman made some progress in improving the items in the front yard, but the yard is still substantively overgrown. A couple of, of three cases have been served with official violations notices. They've been sort of lingering around for a long time with no activity, so they've been served with, with official notices. The one very positive sign was, for one of the properties that had been on the list for quite some time, the owner actually came to the meeting, and his words were, "I'll do anything to get off the list." So, rather than go through it during our meeting, we just had the Blight Officer take him into his office post-meeting and review the case filed with him. So, I have my fingers crossed that that will be, be worked upon shortly.
That's good news.
That's great, thank you.
Sarah, did you have anything to say?
Nope, we're meeting this week for the first time in the Perryville South Course.
Great, okay. Okay. On Krista?
No, Pertry Point Building Committee has been disbanded on hiatus.
Okay, perfect. Kate?
The school. A group that included the, this is our new report. A group that included the architects, the construction manager, consultants, and at least one member of the building committee, been on three separate occasions over the period from September first through September eleventh, with officials from the state's Office of School, Construction, Grant and Review, for what is known as PCR, which is called the Tree Conference Pre-Conformance Review. This is the last O C, O S C G, and our approval step before subcontractor bidding is permitted. We have a few loose ends to complete this week, but just a request to bid by early next week at the latest. The bidding process for requests through awarded contracts is estimated to take about five weeks, with actual construction work to commence in early November. This week, we will be reviewing the site logistics plan with O and G, Dr. Athley and Dr. Porshaw, Superintendent and Principal of Oxford School, respectively. At this point, our cost estimates have us two point two seven percent over our sixty-three million dollar budget. And we have several factors that should help lower the cost, including some value management items, which are significant, that still need approval, and recent experience by O and G that bids on other projects have been two to five percent below their budget estimates. We plan on making a presentation to the school parents in several weeks, once our site logistics plan is finalized. As I mentioned before, this building site is quite challenging, due to the type of soil, excessive, we have excessive fines and wet soil, high water table, and a very strict store, drainage requirements is taken in our stipulation from the town's planning and zoning approval. We are pleased to have O and G Industries and AP Construction as our builders, because we know them. They have excellent track record in large projects in Derry and the surrounding areas, and they are committing the required resources to our project. That's my report.
Thank you. Kip, would you be sure to let us know when you're going to have the parent meeting?
Oh, yes.
So that we can attend if we wish.
Oh, yeah. Make sure everybody knows. I'll be the first one to know.
David, did you have a question for him?
No, 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 I think your point and mine were the same. It'd be the kind of thing I'd like to just listen in on, anyway.
Okay. Thank you, we'll move on to new business. Discuss and take action on a request from the Nuroten Fire Department for a parade on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. It sounds fun. Gosh, only knows if we are going to be able to have parades in twenty twenty-one. You know, I, I guess my, my only thought when I read this was, it's wonderful, I hope that, I recommend that we approve it, I hope we can do it, but, you know, we have a Memorial Day parade not too far in the calendar away from this one. I know that the police commission kind of has a moratorium on approving new events for the public.
They already approved this.
Yes, I understand that, but, you know, it's just a concern of mine. We get the public who have oftentimes come forward with wonderful events, things they want to do to raise money for nonprofits, and the police commission usually says no on those new things. So, I thought it was interesting, but in the same token, hundred and twenty-five years of volunteer fire service is pretty amazing. Anyone else have thoughts on this request?
My only question was, and I think the police commission did address this too, but why on a Friday night at seven P M.? Isn't that going to be an issue with commuters? I mean, I, I have no issue with the concept, I'm curious about their timing. Krista's correct, stopping traffic on Post Road.
Yeah, on the Post Road.
On the Post Road.
They're going to stop at the Post Road in Nearwater to their lot, that's where they end up.
So, they're going to need to cross-
Yeah, they're going into the church lot.
And then they're going to-
The parade terminates in the, in the church.
So, okay, so, yeah. But down Nuroten Avenue, I just- I'm sort of concerned about that. Do they say why they need it Friday night?
No, they do not, I would assume that, that's probably their actual anniversary.
Probably works with the party they have planned.
No, there, there's that on yours.
You know, I, I don't know how everyone will vote on it, but I certainly think it's worth expressing that we all have concerns about interruptions to the evening commute.
Well, they, you know, they did offer to come tonight, and I told them, "No," so if you want to table it till the next meeting and have them answer that question. It's not until June, so, you know, there's time.
Just, just from my education, how, is, is there a cost associated with this, and where does the money come from?
For the town?
Yeah.
The only possible cost would be the police officers.
Okay, so there's no, there's no incremental cost other than traffic control?
We're not paying them free.
Okay.
Well, let's follow on David's comment. So, if there, there certainly will be a cost for traffic control. And I guess I would also like to know if that, if it's intended, if that would be absorbed in the grant money?
Right, would it be, would they be paying them as private duty?
Correct. Where is that funding source?
They're prepared to hire them, but how do they plan to pay them? And do they have to run the state to close down?
They're not closing the state room.
No, we need to close eggs at ten.
Oh, that for us?
Closing eggs at ten, yeah.
That would be the state.
Yeah.
I'd like to suggest that we, I, I, we shouldn't, I mean, didn't anticipate tabling it, but I think we need some more information on a couple items about the timing and how realistic it is that the state will allow for a temporary closure at evening commute time.
Okay. Do you have a motion to table until the twenty eighth?
Motion to table until September twenty eighth.
Second.
David seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Kip abstains? Okay, motion carries.
So, could we just send, if there's any other questions, just send them to you, Kate?
Yeah.
I'll have the answer.
Yeah. Send them forward to the department.
Yeah, please, I mean, firstly, I support the concept, it's more the logistics.
Yeah, we want to figure out how we can get to yes and feel good about it.
Yeah.
Okay. Discuss and take action on a request to authorize for selectmen to apply for a neglected cemetery grant. This is an annual grant that we apply for, it's a small amount of money, it's two thousand dollars, that helps to defray the costs of the work that Public Works Department does in the three cemeteries that are noted, are they noted here or not noted here?
Uh, I think they're in the resolution.
Yeah, exactly.
And this one you can't delay on, because if you want to apply to, the application is due this week, and it is a first, you know, it's, they award two thousand dollars to towns until they run out of money.
So will they.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly. Sarah seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Great, thank you very much. Okay. Item number four. Discuss and take action on a resolution appropriating two million, three hundred and forty thousand dollars for the sanitary sewer system project and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the amount of two million, three hundred and forty thousand dollars to meet said appropriation. So, we have Ed here this evening. I think that we're all generally aware of the work that we want to do in our sanitary sewer system. I strongly recommend that we support this funding. But, like I said, Ed is here, if anyone has questions to ask Ed about, about the work, when it's going to, maybe you could come up and give us a summary of where we are and-
Sure. My question, I asked this of Ed earlier on the phone, was, is this work, we talked about, that we talked about that litigation issue? And I think the answer was?
Yeah.
Yes, I portioned, yes. This was work that we had started to plan to do, but had to move it along a little bit more quickly to satisfy some of our onlookers. As you all, as you all know, we did take under, under advisement, we took some movement towards an I and I study here in town back in October of last year, so it's almost been a year now that we started. We did get an estimated cost for that study to be about six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And the reason we were starting this study was, we did have some overflow issues with our sanitary sewer system back in two thousand eighteen, a significant one in October of that year. The other reason is, with all the water and inflow that we're getting into our system, it was increasing our sewer charge from the city of Stanford, because it actually went through the sewage treatment plan, didn't need to. We did have our consultant apply for a clean water fund grant. That grant allows you to be reimbursed up to fifty-five percent. We were approved back October of two thousand nineteen for that grant. We are still waiting, though, for the state to put the funds into that, I'd say pot of money, or into that grant funding application. We have spent some money so far with our consultant, as you're aware, almost two hundred thousand dollars. We do anticipate the recommended capital improvements from this study, the planning and engineering work for those capital improvements should cost in the range of one point two five to one point five million dollars. Now, this is just the first phase. This is the first phase of, and we want to limit here, and probably about three or four phases, that we're going to need substantial money. Hopefully, after that, and we've gone through about half the town with the camera system and the cleaning system, and the areas that we absolutely know needs the work, I think that we're going to see a vast improvement in our, in a reduction in flow over to the city of Stanford, and hopefully, an improvement in the lack of overflows that we had seen in the past from our sanitary sewer system here in town. So, in putting the number of the study, plus our capital improvements and camera work, and I did include a ten percent contingency, I came to two point three four million dollars. The camera and cleaning does about eight miles for the first year. Allows for about two miles worth of lining, which is about ten thousand linear feet, and also allows us to do manhole lining, and that is, we found quite a few of our manholes to be- we found quite a few of our manholes to be leaking around where the pipes go in, in between the joints and the sections as they go up. So that's going to require that we go in here and do some sealing of those two. So I put that in. Now, this is a very rough estimate. I did review it with our consultant. She thought it was a really good, I think, step forward or estimate, if you will, to move forward with. We're looking to possibly start doing this work sometime next year. I'd say the middle of spring or summer, depending on the, uh, the conditions that are out there. It does require some of this work to be a little bit drier, so we'll have to wait till after the rainy season. But the important part for me was to get the study into the grant funding, the ability to fund that through the grant process and bond it, just in case we don't get the grant. So I wanted to make sure that money was all set and in order. I think that's all I have, unless you have some, your folks have some questions for me.
Just a couple. This is the Stony Brook shed issue, right, with the, sort of with the overflow issue from two thousand and eighteen?
The, the, the Stony Brook discharge up on the Post Road was the main one in two thousand and eighteen.
Right, but some of this work will fix that area, right?
The area we focused on was the Stony Brook area, sewer, sewer shed areas, the largest one we have here. It's about sixty-seven percent of our entire sewer area.
And then, so some of this work will be done to determine if there's illegal connections to it.
That's correct. And some of our findings already, and we've done some what they call flow isolations. They'll go out in the middle of night and they'll see where things flowing, where they shouldn't be. They, they also did some flow analysis on some of our metering, and you can see an instant spike in these couple areas. I won't speak of where they are right now because we're doing the investigation. We don't want anything to change from certain properties, but there are a couple out there that we're targeting right now.
Good. We shouldn't be paying for it.
No, it's a processing.
Questions for Ed? Ready? Okay.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
I want to thank you all for your support for the last couple months. I know bringing you up to speed on this is a little, little, little shocking, but I think we got a good handle on it and I think we're moving forward in the right direction. We're moving at a good pace.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll entertain a, a motion to approve the resolution appropriating the two point three four million and authorizing the issuance of bonds in the same amount.
So.
It moves. Krista seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
You too. Okay, um, new business item number five. Discuss proposals for future agenda items. We have in our packets some notes that David provided to us on things that he would like us to discuss going forward. The first of which is the possibility of a technology officer for the town of Darien. And rather than me talk about it, I'll let David talk about it.
I put, I put this together sort of as a, a thing to stimulate conversation, right? That, that was my intent. I am not the world's greatest techie, that, um, and I, I haven't seen that tech study, so a bunch of this may be covered by the tech study. I don't, I don't really know. But what I sort of, the vision that I sort of have in my head is a, a tech officer that would help sort of design, develop, and implement a strategy for the town as opposed to what is sort of a more ad hoc basis that we've sort of been running on in terms of how the technology evolves and how we get new software systems and things like that. I just feel like that having a, a broader, longer term plan might work. Coincidentally, I listened to the Board of Finance meeting from the twenty-first, and, um, Mr. Zagrodsky actually mentioned when he was reviewing the, uh, the reserve for tech spending, the idea of having a three to five year strategy for expenditures for, he, he was mentioning software, but just sort of the concept of, of sort of trying to plan a more holistic strategy seems like it might be a good idea. And obviously, uh, the document I put together here was mostly to try to leverage as many different sources in town might be sources of information for us. And obviously, uh, since the Police Department has, has mentioned the potential for being their own tech officer, maybe, you know, maybe we could find a way to incorporate that and roll that all in together somehow. So that's my thought.
Great, thank you.
So I received, um, I received the final draft of the tech assessment a couple weeks ago. And just earlier, earlier today, I received an executive summary, um, which, if it's agreeable with the board, I'd like to have them present to you at your next meeting. We can have them dial in and present it to you, um, because you don't need to get down into all the dirty details in the response, in, in the results. And I think when you get that, you then need to decide, you know, where do you want to go? Because as you were, you know, we are going to be soon diving into the budget, and it has budget implications, potential budget implications. You know, is this, you know, are we looking at an employee? Are we looking at an outside service provider? You know, there are a number of different ways to tackle this. Can one person, um, handle the needs of both the town and the Police Department? My personal opinion is no. But I think they more need a full-time person than we do. You know, I think we need more of a, we need more of a, like a firm that can provide a lot of different things to us, but, I think what you, you guys are going to need to do is decide, you know, how you want to, how do you want to approach it? How much work do you want to take on? How much work do you want to put off on a committee? So maybe after the next meeting, we have that presented to you. You can then decide what your next steps are.
Okay. I look forward to having them go through their analysis with us.
It is, um, I think they did a very good job, and we learned, we learned a lot, you know? And we also learned some things like, you know, we have some people who are just not inquisitive at all, you know? If you don't tell them how to operate their telephone, they don't look to go figure it out on their own, you know?
Yeah, when you go look to figure it out on your own, it doesn't work. You really get frustrated. Sorry.
Yeah.
With this presentation, will they have a recommendation? Was that part of the scope as to how we will serve as the needs of the town and the Police Department going forward?
They have recommendations.
Okay, good enough. Could we just make sure that we get something, um, sent to us before the presentation?
Yeah, I just.
We can read through and better understand.
I really, I, I literally received the executive summary this afternoon, had to go into the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting of the R T M, and, um, didn't have a chance to get beyond the first page, so.
No, that's fine. But, but, so we have something that we're not just listening because I'll need to digest it.
I just, I want to review it and make sure that, um, I'm, I, I am okay with what they're going to present to you before I send it out to you.
Okay, yeah, sure, great.
We, we can talk further about that, Kate. I don't know if it would be beneficial at the time they're presenting to have anyone from our current I T department present to listen.
Beneficial to us or beneficial to them?
Beneficial to the discussion and the process of determining next steps. So we can talk more about it.
Yeah, because I think I might like to send them the, you know, the report before it's, um, out in the public, so.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, and then the next, um, set of items were for the Police Department and the Police Commission. Some informational, some sort of, uh, operational and, other things. So David, would you like to talk about this, or would you like to recommend a strategy on how to get answered the questions that you have? Would you like to invite leadership back along with the Commission?
Well, let me just, uh, uh, say that the, the genesis was from our, uh, interviews and everything like that. I felt like one of the goals was to, uh, stimulate a better dialogue between us and the Police Commission. And since they haven't been regular presenters, uh, that would be a way to do that. Uh, I will say they have already done some of the things that I had been hoping for. Uh, I reviewed the website today, and on the website today, they included, uh, since, since we, I had first looked at it, they included the sections from the Code of Ordinances that govern exactly, you know, what is the Police Commission? How is it formulated? What is its role? Uh, those kinds of things. I took a little more time to delve into the descriptions of, uh, the two major bureaus and each of the individual divisions. And those write-ups actually, uh, look, uh, pretty good. But I think that there are some of the other things that we have talked about, uh, from time to time. It'd be sort of good to, you know, get their thoughts on the, the, the concept on the Police Accountability Act is, it sounded like this may have some budgetary implications. And potentially, understanding the, the, the timing or magnitude might be important, but based on your comments about, what was it, C C M? That may be a little premature yet because that yet, may yet be changing, so it may be hard to.
Maybe.
For, for them to, uh, to talk about that. The, uh, the redeployment, uh, concept for the civilian dispatch, that's something that's been talked about for a while. So maybe having them talk to us about what they might be able to do or might not be able to do, or what they think about that would be a good idea. And the, um, the other issue, uh, that we had talked about was the perception of Darien. And, um, Kevin's comments sort of struck me, and then he said that they have a lot of data. And I just didn't know if there's a story that the data could tell to sort of help with that. So those are just, I was, I was looking for ways to sort of stimulate some dialogue back and forth between us since we haven't really been having one.
Yeah, I really like the idea of having a regular dialogue, especially in these times with the Police Commission. We can certainly invite them here. We're also, um, able to go to their meetings. And, and, you know, maybe that might be a, a great thing to do is ask them if we can join them for one of their meetings and, you know, provide an outline of things that we would like them to discuss.
And, and listen, I'm open to changes, modifications, whatever. I sort of just wanted to, you know, capitalize on the recent interviews we did to, to stimulate the conversation and try to keep it moving forward.
Yep, I think it's great. So why don't I reach out to the chief and Kim Hufford and, um, ask them for some dates of Police Commission meetings where, you know, those of us that want to go and have the conversation, we can.
That'd be great, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, parking authority business. Big discussion here. Discuss considerations for the issuance of two thousand and twenty-one parking permits.
Um, yeah.
Don't look so excited.
Well, we haven't had, I think, you can see we've had a lot of people calling us and saying, you know, what are you going to do? Not yet. But if we're going to do something outside our normal annual renewal, you need to start thinking about it. So, you know, I just, these actually were kind of a stream of consciousness as I thought of what, you know, so there's no particular order to them.
Good thoughts.
Although, my, my personal favorite is the last one.
Yes.
You know, one of the things, um, Jamie asked me some questions this morning about, you know, what it would mean if we, if we decided to move to a fiscal year renewal instead of a calendar year renewal, you know, this would be the time to do it. We could extend the renewal period. But that would leave us in fiscal twenty-one with virtually no revenue in the apartment fund. And the apartment fund does have a fund balance, but it can't sustain no revenue and maintain all the, the current, um, outflows that we have, because we do still have to pay the electric bills there. We do still have employees there. So we have to seriously cut back expenses. Looking at what a couple of other towns around us, um, and I, north Stamford, north, because they have the big, you know, major parking garage. Greenwich is not making any changes, apparently. Their renewal period will be starting, and it doesn't show that they're changing their rates or anything. New Canaan, Fairfield, and Westport have all done something like extending the permit year some. And, um, New Canaan and Fairfield both prorated for the next year. Westport, um, looks like they gave them a monthly, a month extra to renew their, their on fiscal year basis. So their permits would have expired June thirtieth. They gave them until the beginning of August to renew. But it doesn't appear that they reduced their rates any for the, um, twenty-one, twenty-two season. Fairfield made a modest decrease in their rates. Um, New Canaan prorated. They gave people an extra four months on the current permits, and the new permits will be, um, the cost will be based on eight, eight months. New Canaan's permits, by the way, are much more expensive than ours. And they're not even on the main line. Same. People here are getting a very good deal. They charge seven hundred dollars. Yeah, so, um, so my recommendation to you would be to extend the twenty-twenty permits into some part of twenty-twenty-one.
So number six?
So number six. And the question then would be just.
How much in one?
Pardon?
How much in one?
How much in one, yeah.
So the question I have is that, does that mean that the office will then be processing this twice? The reduced amount for the extension as well as then the renewal? Yeah, no.
So normally, we send out renewal letters at the beginning of October.
Right.
And they're due back basically the end of October. So we wouldn't, we would send something out to let people know that we're extending the twenty-twenty permits until whatever date we decide.
Got it.
And then we would send out the normal renewal letters, you know, whenever, so say you picked April first. We would probably in February send out and start the renewal process.
So no revenue until that, at that point?
The only revenue right now is people who are paying for daily parking, and, you know, um, we do have people paying for daily parking.
Right.
Not a lot.
You have a lot now.
I'm, what, what I thought about was, I, I like your idea of number six because what's going to happen is, depending upon New York City opening, depending upon whether there is a, a, a vaccine, whether it's distributed and people leaving, the return to work, return to New York City is going to happen gradually. Or it might happen if there's a vaccine, then everybody says, wow, that's it. It might happen sort of in spurts. You just don't know. And the longer you can delay making your decision, the better off you are because you can see what's happening. Right now, people, it was, March thirteenth was the last community day.
Yeah.
That was Friday.
That's right.
So you basically had nothing going on since then. To say you're going to give people day for day, be a little bit silly, but I mean, three months, four months, that sounds about right. Depending upon what happens in November, October, November, December. And you're going to have less revenue in your fiscal twenty-twenty-one because you're going to renew it for, what, eight months, seven months, whatever.
We recognize, well, the renewal rate would be lower, so, you know, if we did.
The rate would be prorated.
It'd be prorated.
Lower, you'd be okay. But the fact is, you have to wait. It seems to be more time you can give yourself before you say, here's the new date. Better off you're going to be because you'll then see what's really happening. And you really, you don't know right now.
No, and a lot of the firms in the city are saying maybe first quarter. There's just not a specific date yet for many.
Long have said, we're not doing anything until the first of the year.
Right.
Some are moving, you know, E Ds, O Ds.
Yeah, some are going in a few times a week, yes, but it is definitely not the volume.
J P Morgan said get the creating people back on the desks.
Right, that's what.
That also, that also doesn't mean, though, that they're taking mass transit.
Right.
I know that one of the, one of the consequences is that people will be driving.
Yeah.
But mass transit right now is so empty, it's pretty safe.
Yes and no. Actually, the volume is coming up. People are saying that it used to be a few in a car, now it's every other row, and then maybe two in a row. It's, it's coming up.
I'm not sure where they're, I wonder where they're getting on.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think, I mean, I just think your number six makes the most sense.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree, but I probably would put in there a 3/31/21 date as opposed to 4/30. I would just give them the first quarter.
I wasn't asking for a vote tonight, I wanted to-
No, I understand.
Okay.
I put 3/31 also.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on that.
But it really depends upon what happens here in the next three months.
Right.
Right, so, you know, so we could, I could bring it to you next meeting to vote on 3/31. And that still allows you to make a change if things don't seem that they're going to return.
Yeah, I mean, so, so we still have time to re-modify.
If somebody comes in, let's just say, October 1st and says, I'd like to get a, a permit, what do you say?
Get on the waiting list.
A new verse.
Get on the waiting list.
Yeah, so what's going on with the waiting lists then?
We will do the waiting list renewal at the normal time.
They have to pay to be on the waiting list?
They have to pay to stay on it. It calls, it, the real help with that is that it calls the waiting list.
Right.
Right.
But you would have people do that now and not at the, at March? I mean, are people gonna be able to make that type of, well, if you would, but-
It's what, $10?
It's $10.
Yeah, it's, it's-
And it's, and it's really, you know, we do things like if we know somebody's gonna be coming off the waiting list because we're gonna be able to sell some permits, we usually will let them know. You know, you're number 10 on the list, you know, you're gonna get a permit. So you don't need to renew. But this is just, you know, giving people the opportunity to decide, you know, is it worth staying $10? You know, paying $10 to stay on the list for one more year? You know, I'm gonna move up, I might get it, eventually I'll need it. And we could, you know, we could just not do it and just let everybody stay in place.
But you have people that are planning to move out of town and they wouldn't tell you if, unless they had paid $10.
Yeah.
So you do, the calling of-
It does get calls on this.
It's been a very helpful process.
Yeah, $10 is a-
It's a bargain, actually.
It's a, it's a small amount per, per capita, so.
Anything to move the list fast, well, normal time, then I need to move the list faster.
Do we know for certain we're not doing anything at the regular time? We're not gonna be doing the renewals at the regular late October, November timeframe?
We have-
Based on what you're saying tonight, yeah.
We have voted on it, but next-
I'm just wondering if we should put some information on the website about that so people can understand that.
Yeah, if I continue, so normally, we would send the letters out the beginning of October.
Right.
So if at the next meeting you go to, you know, delay, you know, extend the deadline on the 2020 permits till March 1st of 2021, we'll put that out immediately.
And we'll put a press release out.
Yeah, I think that's, that's okay.
We have time.
People are curious.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Kate.
Okay, thank you. All right, transfers. Discuss and take action on a request to transfer $7,244 to Darien Fire Department Vehicle Repairs. Kate, did you get the additional info you wanted here?
Nope, I did not.
Okay.
I, the chief said he could put something together, he can go back and look at some invoices. He said it was not one particular vehicle or vehicles. But I still felt that he would want a little bit more information.
I, I do, and I'll make a general statement. I'd also like more information on the, the from column. How is it that we have money in the training services and the uniforms in order to transfer? And I'd just like to make that as a general statement. I mean, some of the, you know, like, the police transfer is very clear. Some of them are clear and obvious, but-
Yeah.
Kate, is this a fiscal year 20 or 21?
This is a 20.
20, okay.
And I did ask Jen if it was a problem, we tabled it and she said no.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we'll wait till we get all the information. All right, discuss and take action on a request to transfer $8,243 to the Health Department, seasonal and temporary. Okay, and this is for a temporary position due to COVID.
Right, and I think David did explain both why we have money available and why we need.
Does anyone have any particular questions on this transfer?
No.
No.
Okay. I guess the one question that I would have is, is this cost included in the COVID expense reimbursement grant application?
I believe this is prospective.
Okay.
So, no.
Okay. But if there's another opportunity to file additional costs, we could include this?
Should make, make sense, yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $8,243. Sarah, may I have a second? Krista, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then last, we have a police department transfer of $15,900 from overtime salary to training services. And this was clerical error. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us on this, Kate? Or any questions on this transfer? No? Okay. Motion to approve the transfer? Kate moves, may I have a second?
Second.
David, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We have some appointments and reappointments this evening. We have an appointment of Joy Kaminsky to the Beautification Commission for a term expiring on 11/30/2020, which is just a couple of months from now. So with your permission, I'd like to recommend we also approve a subsequent, subsequent term expiring on 11/30/2023. Any questions or discussion about that? No, I'll entertain a motion to approve Joy's appointment. Krista moves, may I have a second? Sarah, all those in favor, say aye.
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 We have the reappointment of Jeff Williams to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring 6/30/2022. Motion to approve. David moves, may I have a second?
Second.
Kip seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then the reappointment of Sherry Green to the Architectural Review Board for a term expiring on 6/30/2021.
7/30.
Sarah moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Kip seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And just a note, for Jeff and Sherry, very long time service to the town of Darien. I wanna publicly acknowledge their two decades-long tenure and really appreciate their, their continued service. We have minutes to review, review and approve the minutes of our regular meeting of August 17th. Any corrections or additions?
I gave mine to Kate already.
Okay, any other edits? No, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Just put water, can we get those next time? Because we're voting on something we don't know.
Yeah, I, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it okay if we do-
We can move forward, it is for next time.
Yeah, the biggest one was I forgot to put in who's here at meeting. And then the others were just, I think, minor typos.
Right.
Do you have them with you, Kip? Okay.
Oh, they're typo, no, that's, I mean, typos and attendance are two.
Just admin, clerical. Okay. Motion to approve as amended? David moves, Sarah seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have special meeting minutes of August 17th. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Kate moves. May I have a second?
Second.
David seconds, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, and special meeting of August 10th. Motion to approve.
So moved.
David moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Kip seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Kate, do we have any public comment this evening?
I received no emails and there's no, we, we email.
Okay, thank you very much. Agenda review. We have some things to follow up on, follow up on a meeting with the police commission. Like to put Highland Farm and the idea of pesticide-free organic policy on our agenda. We're gonna put the parking, parking permit renewal on the agenda. Okay, what else?
Was there something else on the park and rec transfers? I'll follow up. Wait, there was a transfer park to rec and you hadn't gotten the information from Pam. Sorry, I'll, I'll go back and get more of the notes. We'll table that for now. There was a memo of understanding on the Homeland Security grant?
Yes. And you had some questions that I have not followed up on.
Okay, I, I can add my list here, perfect interview, so it was just-
We'll put the fire department transfer back on and we'll put the, the parade request hopefully back on.
Was it the police department transfer or the fire department?
It was the fire department.
Fire department transfer.
A vehicle.
Oh, the vehicle, for some reason I don't believe it.
And the grant we're still waiting on, that's-
Steep grant?
The grant review, or grant review process, yes. Before we move into budget, I think we're in the budget season. I do have some proposals to present to you.
Proposals for a grant proposal?
For what should be included in grants, because it, in my opinion, depending on who the recipient is, you should have different requirements. There's some that would be universal.
And some dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And part of that discussion personally, I'd like to better understand, to whom does the board feel we should be issuing grants? In addition to the application itself?
A mission?
Sort of a mission statement.
A recipient policy.
A policy, exactly. It just broadens the discussion, it's part of that same discussion.
That's a good idea because we actually receive requests for grants. Many more than we even consider funding, so.
Exactly, so I think it just helps the transparency of the process. It takes perhaps a little bit of advocate if it's very clear as to who would be appropriated and who would not be.
Yeah.
So you're not-
Okay, that's a healthy list. Anything else?
The only thing I'd say is that the initiation for my questions on Highland were an inquiry from someone who lives near that area. So it sounds like you already have plans to review. When, when you get some final plans, you already have plans to share them with the neighbors to keep everybody happy that, you know, it is-
Try and keep everybody happy.
Yes.
It's impossible, it's impossible to keep everybody happy all the time, but the extra, extra effort is a, is a good thing, so.
Yes, I think that Dan Biggs from Weston and Sampson intends to go back to the neighbors, the adjacent neighbors with his preliminary plan. And then there will be an opportunity for the public to review the plan.
Fantastic.
I think we'll have ample public input.
Excellent.
And pardon me, when is our next quarterly review? When, when, October 20th? Okay, we were chatting about ways in which to restructure that, so I don't know if you wanna do that before you start scheduling that?
Half and half.
Or, or however this body feels it works with-
It was a very long meeting and it's difficult.
Yeah, because that's, you know-
We don't do it now, I meant-
No, wait, I, I, you know- There are two parts to it, I think. What do you wanna get out of it? And what, how can we direct employees? Some employees will get up there and reread their reports, you know, basically, so.
Well, could we put on an agenda to, for us to discuss that, if that, if we're prepared? Before you-
We should do that, yeah, we should do that at the next meeting then to discuss, so. Put your thinking caps on about what you want.
Yep.
Because there could be a whole variety of things, like not every department actually stands up and physically reports at every meeting. Or, you know, submitting your questions in writing beforehand. You know, might mean us getting the reports put together sooner.
Yes.
But, you know, try and think about it because it, it does take a lot of time out of your days as well as theirs.
Yeah, I'd love to have a discussion about it. How can we best achieve the goals of what this body wants and, and theirs? It takes four hours out of most of this staff today to sit there and, it's difficult, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's too much time, but yet we want it to be meaningful, right?
Yeah.
When I first joined the board, every department head would get up and basically say, I have nothing further to report. So then I respectfully asked that they give us, you know, a highlight or two.
Something.
But, you know, the, it, it's not just their reports that they give, it's our line of questioning too that, that lengthens the time of the meeting. So let's have a discussion about that, it's a good idea. Okay, anything else for agenda review? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sarah moves, David seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.